We'll wait a minute here. I know we have some people logging on here. We'll wait it probably a minute or two. We'll get everybody's audience here and we'll get rolling. So I appreciate you guys joining us. We'll make some announcements. Once we get rolling that way. We have everybody's attention. I know some guys probably first time on zoom. So we're, we're going to keep everybody muted right now. Once we get rolling, we do want some interaction. We'll have an opportunity for some questions. There is a chat room at the bottom that you can also direct a question towards somebody that's on the call or to the whole, to everybody that's on the call. So once we get rolling, if you guys want to use the chat feature, but we'll, I know Jeff, Jeff Ross is on the call, major gift officer as long as well as the staff. So we'll do some questions later, but we're going to keep everybody muted right now and we'll get started here in a couple of minutes. So thanks, guys. All right. So welcome, everybody. This is our first Lock Haven Wrestling Zoom call. You know, we wanted to find a way to connect with everybody and you know, this has been pretty popular. We've been doing a lot of Zoom calls with the guys on our team and connecting with recruits this way. So sort of an introductory course here. We just want to connect with everybody, go over some, some action items that we have in place right now, update you guys on some current events and then you know, see if there's any questions. And I think this is something that we're going to keep doing, maybe every other week, continue to build the audience, continue to connect. I know we're right now, most of you guys, obviously you guys are on our email list or you guys are getting texts from us. And we have had a lot of interaction based on the situation right now. So I think a lot more people have time to get on Zoom calls, respond to emails. And you know, one of the ideas to do this, our last email that we sent out earlier this week, they had some links to some articles that we were mentioned in about the program. We had 450 people opened the email. So we, you know, got excited about just taking this time to make sure we're connecting, updating everybody. Obviously you, you guys are on this call because Lock Haven has impacted you in a certain way. You have a direct connection to the program, whether you, you're a season ticket holder, you're a donor, you're an alumni, you're a supporter, or just a fan. Lock Haven has had an impact on your life and put you in a better spot. So we certainly appreciate you guys being here, being part of this is, it's been an interesting couple of months, but we got to continue the momentum and doing what we can do from our end, from a coaching standpoint, from a university, and also from an alumni supporter standpoint to, to keep the momentum going with our program and you know, draw awareness and educate our alumni and fans on what we're trying to do to make sure that Lock Haven Wrestling is not only existing, okay, but we're sustainable as a top 20 program. And we're graduating student athletes and having success both on and off the mat. So it's exciting. It's for us to see faces. I know I've been on a couple of these calls with my previous institutions, with Penn State and UVA. And it's fun, you know, starting up, getting some people on here and just seeing guys that you may have wrestled with, or may have, may have worked with, may went to school with. And you know, I'm seeing a lot of different faces on here now. I think we're getting, get some good feedback, but especially now more than ever with, with the isolation period and guys not, you know, hanging out as much and you know, being to do the things that they normally do. So I think this is really important. You know, from my perspective, it's been unique, being a part of a couple of different programs and then realizing after getting off some of those calls, what that opportunity meant to me and what that experience meant to me. And then looking back and reflecting, you know, evaluating what the opportunity and experience for me at Lock Haven has been. And certainly special being here for 10 years is as long as I've been at my previous institution. So it's, you know, there's a sort of a lot of family, a lot of networking, a lot of connections. And certainly like the rest of you, a lot of memories, you know, and positive ways that we've been able to impact not only our student athletes, but our alumni and just staying connected. And, and that's really what this is all about is staying connected and making sure that, you know, we're doing our part and then you guys are educated and understand, you know, not only the challenges, but the successes that we're having as a program. So you know, I, I think it's important to, to evaluate and reflect and you know, what this, what the experience was like for you and, and how it's impacted your life and you know, what, what your teammates and your friends and your coach has meant to you throughout the experience. And I mean, that's, that's really, that's exciting for all of us. And but yeah, we're, we're certainly, you know, we're, we're in a moving phase right now, trying to plan out the future. And just like all of us, there's, there's a lot of questions and not a lot of answers. So we're continuing our run and to try to put a plan in place to be proactive in planning, whether it's fundraising, recruiting, development with our student athletes. We're trying to make sure we have a plan in place to come out of this in a better position. And some of the, some of the updates really for this cause is to update you guys on some of the things we're doing and educate you on, continue to educate on, you know, what our challenges are as an institution, as a wrestling program. And then, you know, create a call to action for, for everybody to, to draw awareness from their end. And it takes a lot of people, it takes an army to build a program like Lock Haven. You guys have all been involved, involved in that process. But I think the memories that you make through that building process and through that teamwork are the ones that are going to last forever. And you know, I can certainly remember some of the great times that we've had here, you know, and we still have a big mural in our office from the NCAA championships in Pittsburgh, when we had over 400 fans there in the end zone of the NCAA tournament. And you know, remembering Kyle Schut's last match, when the whole, all the fans were counting back points for him. And you know, that moving into our social at the NCAA tournament, having, you know, 400, 450 people there and just seeing the support that we've garnered over the years and the excitement behind our program. It's, it's, it's certainly important to me as the coach, and I'm sure it's important to you as a supporter and alumni, that we continue this trend of, of positive progress and that we're able to do the things that we're, that we're doing currently and sustain that success. And you know, a lot of that comes back to participation, whether it's fan support, showing up for matches, you know, being a season ticket holder, showing up at fundraisers, golf outings, and just being, being visual and being relevant when it comes to supporting, supporting Lock Haven Wrestling. Some of the things we're currently doing right now, we're working on a development plan for recruitment and basically a business plan for our futures, what we need to do to be sustainable, some of the things that are important to us. And we've been successful, you know, working with our graphics guys here on campus, sitting together as a staff and just come up with the right blueprint right now as far as what we need to do with our athletes and just what we need to do with, with our upcoming events. As you, as you know, with the challenges, you know, with not being able to do camps, not being able to do some of our clinics. And you know, hopefully moving into the fall, we're able to get back to work with some of our events, our golf outing and our fall classic tournament. But those are, those are events that directly affect our program and put us in some tough situations financially. So we're trying to game plan and work within the NCAA rules and the MAC rules and institutional rules to put ourselves in a best position and stay active. As things break, we'll be able to move pretty quick and reenact those fundraisers and put the camps and stuff back into play. So the second part of that is we're creating some, some visual. We created a boost page, which is basically a page that just draws awareness for our alumni, our fans, and creates, puts some of the challenges on paper. I know we're all planners. We like to see stuff in front of us. So just put some of that, the basic understanding of what it takes to run a program like Lock Haven. And it gives it an easy opportunity for, for alumni or a supporter to share that page and make a donation, or share that page and educate other wrestling alumni on the challenge that we face. So we're going to, we'll get into that more a little bit later. But the last part is we're working to create a, a book similar to this development program that's going to recreate in some degree, the history of Lock Haven Wrestling. We want to make sure we're recognizing the successful athletes, coaches and alumni, whether it's business, medical field, or graduates that are now giving back in the coaching realm, whether it's college or high school. We want to make sure that we're recognizing our successful wrestlers and the history of our program. And I think that's going to create a lot of avenue and a lot of open doors for us to connect and bring relevance to, you know, guys that have wrestled here in the 60s and 70s and, and 80s and, and all the way up to the, to the recent graduates who have been part of our, our last couple of years that we've seen a lot of success. We're excited about that, that progress. And those are things that are just hard documents that we can, we can share with you guys upon request. Most of the stuff are in PDF form where we can mail you a copy and something, some reading material. But we're also working on with our recruiting in, kind of with some recruiting updates. I know we were waiting on a couple NLI's to be signed and working on some video highlights and just some, some fun facts about our incoming class. A lot of questions based towards us of with graduating seven or eight seniors. There's a lot of interest behind our incoming class and, and the talent and where we project those guys. So we're, we're certainly excited to release our final recruiting class. I could say that it's, it's by easily, by far easily our best recruiting class in the history, part of the program. A lot of depth, just a lot of character, a lot of value that these guys are going to bring to us, but obviously a lot of success on and off the mat academically and wrestling standpoint. Hopefully you guys get our emails, see some of that success that you guys out from being state champions to Ironman champions, to power eight champions, to full national champions, to multiple placers. And so it's, it's a pretty big class, at least a dozen athletes with three or four transfers from Juco colleges or other divisional schools as well. So we're certainly excited to get those guys acclimated within our program. Obviously you guys understand the challenges. We're dealing with those guys with the uncertainty of, of school right now. You know, we're, we're hopeful that we'll be back to school in the fall and we can get these guys on campus and start to develop relationships, create bonds with each wrestler and continue to develop these guys, the next ones representing us at the national championships. So that's, that's from the recruiting standpoint. You guys will see some updates coming out more with that. And this is the future of the program. So we've invested a lot of time, a lot of effort and a lot of finances in these guys. And we expect them to, to carry the torch forward. As you know, the history of our program is very deep and very rich, dating back almost 82 years and crowning for Divisional All Americans and multiple national champions. And you know, so these guys have those expectations on their shoulders. And you know, it's our job to develop those guys and help them graduate and go on to be successful. So some of those ideas that we're working on right now, and we want to make sure we're educating everybody, everybody up to date. Obviously email works fine. But you know, these Zoom meetings, I think are a great way to connect. I know I'm sitting on a few of these, just seeing some old teammates, being faced with guys that I coached, guys that have coached here, guys have been at our, you know, at our setting at duel meets and guys have just been influential in supporting our program, great to get a face-to-face connection every now and then. So as far as the movement with the season, you know, a few, a few random updates from our end. The NWCA has made a request and coaches voted unanimously on trying to make wrestling one semester sport and essentially more so for this year, starting later in the season, based on the circumstances. So that, that motion is going to be moved up to the ADs and to the NCAA. So that's sort of, I don't know the end result, depending on how things work, but I would certainly anticipate it when they start to this season. But then again, we're, you know, we're just hopeful that, you know, again, like everybody else, that we can start the season, get our athletes in the room and start the development process with our guys. And a few other updates, I know you guys have seen some of this, but academically, our guys finished really well this semester. We had five guys with a 4.0 and 15 guys, almost half the team with a 3.5 or above. So I think just the, the long talks, the conversations, the championship culture that we're trying to build here and instill the character and the qualities, the core values that we want from our student athletes. You know, some guys mature at different levels, but I think eventually you, you surround guys in the right atmosphere with the right people and, and guys really start to do, start to figure it out. And we're certainly proud of our guys for the way they handled the, the end of the season and not being able to compete at the national tournament through the academic semester and doing so well academically. And you know, we, we're proud of our graduates. You know, we want to make sure we're doing updates, giving you guys updates on our graduates as well. And most of these guys are out working right now and doing different things. But certainly a bittersweet ending for, for our five national qualifiers and our first ever MAC champion and Jared Seacrest. And I think he's, he's kind of a, a great example of hard work and dedication and just staying consistent, believing in the process and, and striving all the way to the end. You know, he had a lot of ups and downs throughout his career, but he was a guy who was always consistent, always stuck, stuck with the process. And to, to become our first ever MAC champion was something special for him. And you know, a great opportunity for us. It was, it was a different year in regards to competing at the MAC. It was a little bit more competitive. And I thought our guys did well. We showed through in the Russell backs with our seniors and Feldman Schup coming through and Werner obviously coming through and winning those matches. And but the, these guys, I think it was an eye opening experience as far as the competitiveness with having Missouri, with having Central Michigan. But I, in the long run, joining the MAC was, was a great for our future. And I think it adds a lot of promise for, for our conference and for our institution. So I'm going to, I'm going to move into a few things here and then we'll probably a few more minutes. And then I'm going to have Jeff share a page for you guys. But get into some of the finances. And this is, these are important figures only because I think people like to understand the facts and what it takes to run a program. And you know, so due to, obviously with the, with the effects of COVID right now, you know, everybody's in a tough position. And as you can follow the NCAA and all the announcements, there's a lot of mid-level programs being cut. Some wrestling programs, but you know, a lot of baseball, track and field. And so it's, it's a scary time for everybody, you know? And, and as a coach, as someone who's invested in, as you guys are in this program, we want to make sure that we, we continue to do our job to create sustainability with our program, create awareness within our administration, within our campus and with our supporters and make sure we, we're always, we have a plan in place and we're creating action plans to, to battle some of the setbacks that we've had with, with COVID. So as I mentioned, you know, they just extended the dead period for recruiting to July 31st, which creates some challenges with us for camp. We originally moved our camps around, but now our July 12th camp is pretty much canceled. So we have to continue to plan with our camps, continue to plan and find ways to cultivate new relationships, come up with new action plans. And you know, I, I know a lot of you guys are aware of the challenges, but you know, as we continue to build our program, a lot of our success over the last couple of years has been based on our scholarship allotment. When I took over the program, I think we had around four scholarships. And now last year, we, we offered close to nine scholarships. So what that means is it's around, you know, a hundred thousand dollars in extra fundraised money that we're, we're putting back into the program in a lot of different ways. We've created some opportunities with foundation name scholarships and some endowments. Just over the last four years, we've increased those numbers by almost $95,000. And essentially those are five-year commitments and pledges that last and help us, you know, give scholarships, guaranteed scholarships for five years. So that's exciting for us. I think that's opened a lot of doors and allowed us to, to recruit, retain and give us the peace of mind that we can do the work that we need to do to continue to build our program behind the scenes. Some other, some other financial challenges with us, obviously travel expenditures, competing in the MAC, competing in bigger tournaments such as the Southern Scuffle and some of these events where we want national exposure. You know, we work on a limited budget based on what the university allocates to us. So that, those are some of the challenges. We're spending upwards of 15 or 20,000 dollars a year on those extra expenses. And then, you know, things such as, such minor as gear, you know, wrestling shoes and gear that we have to get for our guys. Again, none of these things are funded by the university, which this isn't a knock on anybody from, from our administration or anybody related to our university, just the bare facts. So I, I think the challenges are stacked up against us. But as alumni and supporters and people that are successful and elite in our fields, we've been able to navigate those challenges because of, because of your support, because of your involvement, and then because of the hard work of our coaching staff. And we've been able to really, I think, put a lot of great things together for our program. You know, that being said, we're, we're looking at the future planning, the next year and where those challenges are going to be faced with the lack of camps, a lack of events, and more than likely the lack of funds from the university with, with things that are going on. So we've created a couple of different opportunities just to draw awareness and to give opportunity. I'm going to ask Jeff Ross, the major gift officer, we've created a boost page. And this is something, once you have the link, you can share it. And we'll also send this out to, to our email list. But it's just a, a great way to connect and make an easy way. We've made this thing to last, I think around 80 days. And that's essentially how long our program's been in existence, 80 years. So we've, we've created some unique opportunity here. Just, so I'm going to ask Jeff if he can try to share the page.
All right. Can you see it?
Yep, we're good.
Popping up. Okay, perfect. Yeah. So as Scott mentioned, so our goal here is for 50,000. We have 95 days to go on it. And we kind of broke it down in ways that as it'd be most necessary for the team, broken down with $25 for the head, headgear, $50 for the custom travel polo, $100 for the travel jackets and gear they wear to travel in, $250 for the wrestling running shoes combo, and 500 bucks for intro, entry into a team tournament. Just kind of break it down there. But we also have the custom amount. So please feel free to donate as you can. And as we know, all your support is very generously appreciated. Couple, and Coach Moore wrote a letter to everyone, all the supporters. I won't take the time to read that. When we share it with you guys, I like to just watch the video. It's a great piece by Coach Moore, designed by the team. And there's just a lot of good facts in here that I think everyone that's really dedicated to the program needs to see. A lot of you guys make the, all this stuff happen. And we appreciate your support and your dedication to the program. And anything you guys can do to help out would be greatly appreciated. Scott will throw it back over to you.
Yeah. Yeah. So that's just one of the things we've been working on. Obviously we want to, we want to call everybody. It's a call to action for us. And this isn't a, a first Zoom call. We're asking for guys to get on and it's not all about the money, but it's about the exposure and it's about the awareness and it's about the education for us. We're not, we're not here simply, you know, to ask for money, I think, but also we're in a position as leaders of the program to make sure that we're doing our part to make sure Lock Haven Wrestling is here in 10 years or 20 years. Okay. Or in two years, you know? So I think the, the more exposure, and it really comes down to participation. I think when you look back at, from administrator or president's position, it's how many people are showing up to duel meets, which I think we've proved our worth there with, you know, being in the top 25. And as far as duel meet attendance, I, I think it's, it's awesome. You show up for a duel meet, you know, against Army, against Cornell, against Rider. I mean, the teams that we faced, guys have been to some of the whiteout matches and order some of the rumble, the jungle matches. I mean, that's a direct impact of your support. Okay. You're, you guys being super fans as far as following, supporting, sharing, and making Lock Haven Wrestling an important part of your life. And it's, it's, we're certainly grateful for that. And this whole program exists because of you. Let's be honest. If we didn't have supporters, if we didn't have people that were generous and that cared as much as you guys, we, we wouldn't be in the position we're in. So we're, we're certainly grateful for that. And but also, you know, we need to make sure that we're doing our part from our end. And that's drawing awareness, stating the facts, making it visual and, you know, hoping everybody understands the challenges that we do face. And I know there's, it's been, it's been definitely a fun ride leading this program. I know our, our coaches are working hard, our alumni are working hard. We have a lot of guys beyond the scenes. You know, a lot of guys that are on this call that have wrestled here, that stay in contact. And it's a unique opportunity for us because it's truly one big family that's supporting one cause. And that's a program that's developing a student athletes and that's celebrating the history of our program. Every time a student athlete steps on the mat for us, we're celebrating the history of our program. You know, so we, we want our alumni to be involved, whether you wrestled here in 1948, in the first few years of the program, or you wrestled here in 2018, 2019. We want every time we step on the mat and have success, we want each alumni to feel that success and be able to relive those memories and relive those experiences that, that they had while being at Lock Haven. I mean, let's be honest, college is a time where you grow, you develop, you create partnerships and friendships and, and create strong networks for the future. And that's exactly what we're trying to do. So there's, there's a bigger picture involved here. It's not all about winning. Okay. It's about life achievements. It's, it's about the network and it's about the friendships that we develop. So that's, that's sort of where we're at right now. And you know, rather than sit back and, and look at some of the challenges and say, well, you know, how are we going to find ways to fund our scholarships? We got to be proactive. And we want to create this call to action with, with you guys. And we'll continue to extend this and do this every couple of weeks and continue to put out literature. There's a lot of different ways of support. And obviously you guys know that for, you guys are the ones that are opening emails. You guys are the ones that are showing up for duel meets. So you guys understand it. But I think just understanding some of the inner workings is obviously an advantage for when you're explaining to somebody who may be in a position or may have interest in helping a program. But we're all useful, we're all tools for advancement. And I think we all have a position in building this program. I know Jeff, Jeff's going to share in the chat box. He'll share, share the link to the boost page and you guys can have that always. He'll email that out. But I ask that you guys, as, as super fans and supporters, that you guys get out, continue to share updates from us, forward emails, support any capacity that you can support in. You know, this isn't, I, I think our program's safe right now, just because of our history, because of our success. But we've got to continue to be relevant. This isn't about existing. This is about continuing the tradition that we've built. This is about being a top 25 program. This is about having four or 500 fans at the national tournament. And we're not, we're not here just to be average. You guys are elite in your fields. You guys have been successful because of your hard work and your challenges that you guys have overcome. And that's, that's our outlook on this as well. So we're going to be proactive and finding solutions and pushing people to, to get super involved, making pledges, making commitments, and then doing their part to continue this upward trend. I, I don't have anything else from our perspective, guys. I am open for some questions. Anything you guys are interested to hear more about, we'll take a few minutes. And I also have, you know, the coaching staff is on the call. We have our Matt Towne club presidents are on the call. We have a lot of diverse group on the call. So you guys can use the chat feature, or you can unmute yourself and ask questions. But we'll take about, you know, 10 minutes or so. If you guys have any questions. If not, you know, we certainly appreciate your time and your support and your friendship here within our program. You guys use the chat feature at the bottom. Again, Jeff just shared the, the boost page link. If you're shy and you don't like talking in front of people, you can use the chat group down there to ask your questions, or you can unmute yourself in the bottom left hand. Obviously we're open to questions and hopefully I answered all the questions, but...
Scott, this, Scott, can you hear me? Patrick Long here.
Yes, I got you.
For folks that don't know me, Patrick Long, head men's soccer coach at L H U, 2008 alum. I appreciate Scott letting me jump on the call. He's a mentor to me and how I'm trying to lead the men's soccer program. Just curious, you mentioned a great recruiting class and then tying in the loss of camps and clinics. How many of your recruits for the 2020 class came through your camps and clinic system that you're, you're missing out on this year?
Yeah. I mean, I, obviously the camps are a big part of our program and they date back, the history of our camps dates, dates back, you know, 30 years, at least 30 years, probably more than that, obviously. But back when, you know, Neil Turner built team camps and all the way through the coaching staffs and... And, you know, you talk to alumni, you talk to college coaches, high school coaches, and everybody remembers their experience at the Lock Haven Wrestling camps, climbing the stairs up to McIntyre. You know, so the impact of our camps and the history of our program have been crucial and have been super important in connecting not only recruits but coaches. And, you know, we have guys on this call who's, who, whose sons or daughters come to our camps and get involved after they have a great experience, you know. So those things have been very, the camps have been very important to us. And, you know, without having, and without having the opportunity to connect with future student athletes through camps, obviously, with our dead period right now, it adds a lot of challenges. We're, we're having to do a lot more things over social media, over Zoom, over phone. But, you know, the camp system that have been here, been in place, and we've been able to build back up to, you know, 500, 550 campers has been certainly crucial. And just so everybody's aware of how our camps work, the camps go directly into our university scholarship account. So all the funds are collected, they go into our university scholarship account, and those funds are then allocated directly towards scholarships. So money's raised from camps, doesn't go into our operating fund, they don't go back to pay coaches, they don't go back to help buy team gear, they're all put into scholarships. So that's where about $75,000 a year go back right to our scholarship fund. So maybe a little bit less than half of the money that we give out through direct athletic funds. But yeah, it's, part of the way we've built our program is through connections using armed software. And that's allowed us through our camps to build momentum going into our clinics, into our Fall Classic tournament. And these are things that have been in place, fortunately, for years. We've just been able to reintroduce them at a different level, different software, different registration companies that make it a lot easier for our staff to directly run those events. In the past, they've had camp operations, they've had different people involved. We run that all, all the accounting, all the registration, everything internally now, just to save costs and put that money right back into our scholarship account. Thank you, Pat. So I'm going to give, if you guys don't have questions, I'm going to give Coach Carr and Coach Perry just a minute to say hello and put a face with the name. Obviously, you guys know who these guys are, but just give them a minute to say hello. If you guys want to step in.
We can't, I can't hear you. Well, anyway, I'm Coach Perry for any of the, any of you that don't know me. I'm actually an assistant on the men's team now, and I'm the head women's coach. And, you know, it's just, it's nice to get on here and see so many people joining. Obviously, a lot of people that we know and talk to often and, and big supporters of the program, you know, a bunch of alumni on here as well. But like I said, it's, it's great to see you guys on here and listen to, to what Coach Moore and Jeff Ross have to show you guys, you know, what they've been working on. But, you know, like I said, we need, you know, we owe a lot to you guys, and your support, you know, really helps us function as a program. And, you know, we're looking forward to this year, and hopefully, we can kind of get back to normal here and get training in again. I know it's, it's been hard for me not being able to wrestle every day. You know, they talk, the quarantine 15 that I've put on from not working out with everybody every day is, you know, it's been hitting me hard lately, so I'm looking forward to getting back and working out again. And I think, you know, I think that this team and this recruiting class that we have coming in this year, you know, then the next year, the next two, three, four, five years, you guys will see, you know, the benefits of, of having such a big and talented recruiting class coming in. I think, you know, I, I speak for, for Coach Moore and Coach Carr, and I think this will be one of, one of those classes that makes a huge difference in our program. So we're going to, we're going to continue to keep the ball rolling and do everything from our end to make sure that Lock Haven Wrestling stays relevant and, you know, and hopefully moves up into the top 15, top 10 in the country in the next few years. So again, thank you guys for your support.
You guys still can't hear me? My mic's not working, right? You can hear me now? Okay, sweet. Sorry, I was, I had to log back in. Thank you guys for joining today, it means a lot. Coach Moore and Coach Perry and I and the staff have been working really hard to make sure that we continue the tradition of Lock Haven Wrestling dating back always to 1938. So we're really excited to continue this tradition and to be great, be a top 10 team. And it doesn't happen without you guys' help, so we're going to keep grinding, keep working hard. I'm always available if anyone has any questions or needing help with anything. As far as a supporter of Lock Haven Wrestling, I'm very thankful to be here and be a part of this Haven Nation, this family. I want to continue to build the program and to just educate our young athletes on the support that we get from a great fan base like you guys. And without that support, they wouldn't be where they're at. And we're going to continue to make you guys proud, we're going to continue to do the community right, and support everyone and other teams and other programs that are in similar situations. So again, thank you for getting on this call, look forward to seeing you guys down the, down the road. And again, thank you, we appreciate it.
Yeah, thanks, Coach Carr. I mean, this is obviously a unique opportunity for us to connect and a good starting point for us. We're going to continue to update everybody on, on our progress and just upcoming events. I know we're still planning, our annual golf outing will be in October, we still have plans to do that. But we want to make everything we do transparent to you guys as fans, supporters, as season ticket holders, alumni. I just saw Charlie Brenneman, the Spaniard, joined in on the call. Thumbs up, Charlie. So we have, we have guys out there like Charlie that are mentoring and educating and sharing his knowledge with, with youth across the country and doing a great job of using his Lock Haven degree to not only build his, on his experience, but to help other student athletes and, and young kids create a model for success for the future. So such a great fan base, such a great alumni base, we want to continue to do this. You guys are free, you know, we're very, very open and transparent with emails, with texts. Most of you guys have my cell phone number, we'd love to help answer questions. We'd like to help you guys understand anything you have in questions with the program. Obviously, Jeff Ross is on the call as well, and, you know, we'd love for you guys to get ahold of him and, you know, plan out your future as far as possible donations, pledges, or ways that he can help you guys understand the process as well. And we'll, we'll be doing this, you guys will get updates, but I would say probably two weeks, we're going to do round two of this, and, you know, this is where the call to action comes into places. If everybody grabs two or three more people for the next call, you know, we're going to build our base. I know we, we sent this out yesterday, we sent a little reminder out. But we have, we have close to 500 people that open emails from us in some, in some capacity. So I know we can get bigger numbers, I know we have some older alumni that aren't comfortable with using Zoom. But I think we can introduce, introduce this software to them and get them activated. And it's, it's exciting to see different faces and, and see our supporters face to face rather than over the phone or over text. So I appreciate you guys joining us. You know, I know some of you guys are getting on that, on the Zoom or on the boost page already. Dan Heckard trying to be the first one, he wanted to get first place, getting his donation in. But, you know, guys like Dan Heckard are, are pushing the women's wrestling movement in Pennsylvania. Obviously, he's a coach at North Allegheny, starting a women's program up down there. But he's helping push the women's wrestling movement in PA. So you just have so many people that are doing special things for the sport, for the sport of wrestling. And, you know, I think that's huge for our program, the exposure. I know, just from following some of these major magazines, doing interviews on Flow Wrestling, I know Wind Magazine is coming out with an article that we, we did last week on the challenges of building small programs, and I think that's going to be a great article they're putting out. Most of you guys saw the article from the Daily Collegian that they put out on, on Monday. But these are, these are a great exposure for our program. And, you know, anytime we can get press, national press from a major site, it draws awareness about the things that we're doing. And there's so much great, great information, so many great stories coming out of our program because of your support and because of your hard work and your dedication. So it's certainly an honor for me to be part of it, to be able to lead the charge. But it's a, it's a family affair, and, you know, we have a lot of people that are on board to, to fight the good fight. So any other questions? Some notes over here, Joe Eaton Spaniard in the house. I know somebody on Facebook just shared a 1995, 96 highlight video, and so that was fun. And you guys, if you follow Tom Ellington on Facebook, he's posting a ton of the history of Lock Haven Wrestling as well. And definitely encourage you to get on and check out the Spaniard on his podcast and some of his live events that he runs, very inspiring, and I think it's a, a great avenue to not only connect with wrestling, but he can take you through a 200-page book in, in 30 minutes, and you don't have to do the reading. You just learn all the good stuff, learn the Cliff Notes, and then you're good to go for the day. So save some time with, with the effort that he's putting in and, and the growth and development that he's putting into our student athletes, so.
Excuse me, Scott, do we, we're recording this, is there a way to send this out to other alum as well? To, just so people can see the support we have, looks like Jeff's giving a thumbs up. So recording this and sending it out to people as well, just to, just to show the support that we're getting is something I think that'd be great. So I don't know if you guys already mentioned it, my apologies.
Yeah, they're, they're, they're recording it, so yeah, we're going to send it out. But I did see Joe Eaton, yeah, that, I, I would assume that they took a vote. Mike Moore or Jim Fallis, they run the N W C A, took a vote with coaches as far as pushing back the start of the wrestling season. I'm no expert, but I think it was like a 92% vote. So I, I feel like that's going to be presented to the higher-ups, and based on the situation, they may be, I don't know when the timeline would be released, and I don't know what that would look like, but that's, looks like the way that everybody's leaning, at least for the season. And I don't know if that'll stay in place for future years or not. But those are the inside conversations that, that are being had. I know I was on a COVID task force with some of the higher-ups, just talking about actions, budget cost savings, and just, you know, our schedule will look a little bit different this year, no matter what. We're staying more regionalized, you know, staying within five or six hours, and most of our travel will be by vans, you know, we're, we're, we're team players, we want to make sure that we're doing our part. And obviously, we're always staying within budget, but just making sure our schedule is appropriate during these times and, and not flying and not traveling and not spending money that we don't need to spend during this time. So those are some of the challenges. I think everybody's going to have budget cuts, everybody's going to have things that they got to do to be relevant. And the big part is to, to save as many programs, you know, there's 78 wrestling, Division One wrestling programs, there's a few more in the works, but we got to continue to be sustainable in that. I mean, wrestling's important to everybody, and it's, it's certainly special at the NCAA tournament when you see small programs winning big matches, you know, and not to get on too much of the tangent. But if you look back at some of the wins that, that our guys have had, individual wins over the last couple of years, wins over, you know, guys from Iowa, Oklahoma State, Nebraska, you know, Big Ten champions, top five seeds at the NCAA tournament, there's been so many great, exciting wins that our guys have been able to accomplish from a small program. So it's important to the sport, it's important to our alumni. As I mentioned, 80-plus years Lock Haven Wrestling has been in existence, so we want to make sure that the next 80 years just is successful. I see a couple other comments from Paul, thank you. I know we're doing some camps down in York and some areas down there as well, and, and now in August. So we're going to continue to push stuff back and stay relevant, stay connected, and stay transparent with you guys. So if there's nothing else.
There's a couple of questions left. Seth had a question for you down in the comments. You see that?
Yep, I got you. Yeah, it's, you know, right now, even though the NCAA came out with June 1st, as far as having athletes back on campus, it's all institutionalized as far as the decision to have athletes on campus. So, you know, we're, I don't anticipate us being allowed to directly train our guys. It's voluntary, based on the NCAA. So we, we have some, some alternative sites, you know, as soon as we've got clearance from USA Wrestling and from the university that we'll continue to train our guys. It's really about, for us, it's about staying in contact with our guys, creating goals, and just making sure that these guys, it's, it's a constant reminder about the goals that we have in place, about what it takes to build a championship team or have a championship culture, and doing the little things right every day. I know we, we have Zoom calls with our guys, our team, we have Zoom calls with our incoming freshmen. And, but it's, it's, it's really just constant reminders. You know, you can imagine as a student athlete right now, the uncertainty, the, the time management that it takes. I think it's good when guys are working and staying busy, obviously, working, making money, but also having plans in place as far as training, places to train lifting, cardio. So we've set some different ideas and, and given these guys some structure on what they should be doing. And, you know, so that's, that's tough for us. I mean, we're hands-on, wrestling coaches are hands-on. It's, if you can't directly impact somebody on a daily basis through physical or mental support, it's hard for you to get the true value out of it, and we understand that. So a lot of phone calls, a lot of texts, a lot of our, I mean, our guys are working hard, they're, they're staying active, they're tracking numbers, you know, we're doing a lot of, a lot of running, a lot of tracking times, and just having our guys stay in touch with us with that. But yeah, the expectations, we're certainly, certainly excited to display some of the guys that, you know, some of the red shirts from last year, obviously, John Ross with 52 wins last year. I think he kind of turned the corner, bringing some other guys back that registered, some younger guys. You have Colin Myers, I think he was going to be an impact guy for us. But you also have a ton of incoming freshmen who are, who have the capability to step right in the lineup. Guys like Tyler Stulfsus, who was ranked number one or number two in the country. Guys like Sage Shabentu is a Flow, Flow National Champion. We have guys coming in, Will Bettencourt was a state champion, PA state champion. We have guys that are, you know, kids coming in from Georgia, four-time state champion from Georgia. We just have a ton of talent, and, and really, it comes down to the culture and the environment that you create and the expectations that you, you hold your wrestlers to. And our big planning for the summer, I, I think it's just continuing to create that, that thought in these guys' minds, what it takes to be a championship team, the chemistry, the team building, and the mindset and the training. And we have, we have, you know, qualified staff, these guys are working hard, and we expect to come back next year and be very successful. And, and obviously, it's about development, it's about overachieving for us sometimes. It's taking a kid that, you know, you don't really know too well and having them, you know, have some top 20 wins, having to make the national tournament. And it's the overachieving and the development that's really important to us in the long run. So la- last question, good question, Derek. Is there an update on grant submission by our program to help make up the loss of camp funds? Those are ongoing questions. We've submitted documentation, three-year averages for our camps, and the COVID funds, I guess, are being allocated to universities. And as you can imagine, all of the athletic programs are in a similar situation as we are, some more than others, you know, as far as how that impacts, how their camps impact the future of their program. So we're hopeful that some of those funds will be recouped through this COVID refund process or COVID allocation process, and we don't know right now. I think those are, those are questions we continue to ask our athletic director. And, you know, it's important to us that those, one way or another, whether it's 50% or whatever the percentage is, those are, that's, those are monies that we need to continue our upward trend. Well, thank you, guys, appreciate it. We're at 52 after, it's been good seeing everybody. We will send some links out with the recording of the meeting that you guys can share. We'll share, we'll send the boost page out, and, you know, obviously, we're here. We, we appreciate you guys being a, a big part of our success and look forward to hearing you guys, from you guys in the near future. Have a great day.
You too.